Call to orders, Budget Workshop, Rocky Hill Board of Education, January 30th, 2025, Town Council Chambers. The time is now 6:35. If everyone will please stand for the Pudge Allegiance.
Pudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome back, everyone. So, we left off, we're gonna do technology and CIP tonight.
Yep.
I also had asked everyone to look through the budget. I think a couple of questions were emailed.
Yep.
And so, we'll start with that.
Yeah, if it's all right with the board, I'm just gonna review the materials I passed out, kind of orient you to what we have here. You have an email, this was a question Mr. Clemens asked about athletic expenses. So Chuck sent this to me today after we did the research on it. This is, to give you a sense of what we spend, but this is the amount for the current fiscal year. For the high school, about seventy-eight thousand dollars. That includes, you know, all of your officials, referees, umpires for baseball and softball, wrestling, basketball, swimming, all the officials. And then, keep in mind, anytime there's an intraschoolistic athletic event, it involves timers, scoreboard operators, event proctors, ticket takers. So about seventy-eight thousand for the year for the high school, that includes all varsity and JV, and then about twelve thousand for the high school. So it's, GMS wrote, about ninety, ninety K total on that issue.
Thank you.
The second piece of paper you have, we had a couple of questions, I think Mr. Gavin was alluding to this, Mr. Kosker had a question, and that involves the line item increases versus the impact on the total budget. So if you take a look at this sheet, we added a column, okay? So for example, with the salaries, you see the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, the proposed budget, the percentage or impact on the budget, as we've talked about consistently, salaries are a little over sixty percent, sixty-seven percent of the overall budget. So within that salary line item, the increase on that line is four and a half percent, the overall impact on the budget is three percent, which, if you think about it, makes sense because two-thirds of four and a half percent is roughly three percent. Does that line, does that chart now make sense to people? That's exactly what you asked about.
Yeah, no, no, that's great.
Where each item is growing, as we talked about, you know, benefits is up eight point one seven, total impact on the budget, one two one. So again, as I said earlier, if the board just did salaries and benefits and no increases across the line, you're still at a four point two six budget. Any questions on that sheet? It's exactly what you were driving at the other night, too.
Right, exactly. And I just wanted, everybody wanted to have those same numbers that you had on your page and in your head.
Is that, so, okay, so that, he would request it to add, and then, Mr. Chabra had a question regarding revenue and expenditure for the Dream Cafe operation. You have another sheet in front of you, and I'll just go over that very quickly. So, as we said, since we kicked it off, we, Aaron has really done a great job working pretty closely with Amy on ideas to expand sales. So, to date, for this fiscal year, starting in July, you see that sales are at almost thirty thousand dollars. The grant, a couple of you asked about it, that's basically the last major payment, that's reflected at fourteen thousand eight hundred fifty. We do, there is a closeout grant we're supposed to get once we close everything out and give a final report, it's a couple thousand dollars, I think maybe five thousand more. So we'll reflect that at some point, we haven't received that additional funding there. And then tips, two thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. The kids don't keep tips because they're students, but it just, it all gets collected and put into the account. So you see the overall revenue there is a little over forty-seven thousand. And then, we've broken down the expenses for you. You could see expenditures, including, you know, everything, twenty-one thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars. So, at this point, twenty-five thousand to the positive in terms of profit, if you will, which again, that explains, and a couple of you had asked questions, why we haven't touched the fifty thousand dollar line item the board set aside for supplies? We haven't had to. It's self-funding at this point. Keep in mind, that profit number includes that grant. So without that support of that grant, you'd be looking more at, you know, roughly a ten thousand dollar.
So are you, are you eliminating the fifty thousand line this year?
Yeah, that has come out of the budget, we talked about that. Yep, that's not in the budget for next year.
Great.
And that's always as July 1st, so.
Yep, that's, that's July 1st to date, so that's not for the full year. That's, that's only from July to, you know, we basically ran the report to the end of January, it's the thirtieth, so. So I think that covers those questions that were asked the other night. Finally, and I think we should address this when we address CIP, but, I don't know, a little less than two weeks ago, the town asked us to fill out a survey related to the CIP and CIP projects. So I asked Chuck to work with Ron LaMontaigne. They wanted us to score all of the projects in terms of priority. For all projects, I made a decision to only score board projects. I don't want to be in a position as a superintendent, and I would advise the board probably not to take a stance on it as well, to determine whether the, whether or not the French Street sidewalks are more important than the fuel tank garage. I didn't feel like we were in a place to make assessments on those items. So I instructed them to put "not applicable." But what we did do is we ranked the board projects, you know, on a scale of one to ten, based on where they are on the CIP, the overall urgency and importance to the school district, in terms of when we should address things and so forth. And I wanted you to see that. So that was a request. We just want to be as transparent as possible and give you that information. So, I think we'll get into more detail when we do the CIP, but that's the other handout you received this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Zito.
Yes.
Just back to the Dream Cafe, expenditures, this doesn't count like the rent and everything, right?
Count what?
Like the, how much we're paying for rent for the, for the building.
No, this is, this is just the operating expenses for the culinary operation. It does not include the rental fees.
One other question, is there some way we could do something special for the, the kids that work there with the tip revenue? I mean, maybe not all of it, but maybe like plan something nice for them?
Yeah, we could certainly look at that, yeah.
Well, they do. They do parties and things like that. Like I was just there a couple weeks ago.
Okay, cool.
Remember I said the example, the kids?
Cool.
Remember? So, they do activities and parties and special events with the kids at the Dream Cafe.
Okay, excellent.
And they also do, like, they'll do cooking classes, and then she'll let them obviously like taste what they're doing.
Enjoy what they, what they've made.
Yeah, they are able to do some fun things.
Okay, excellent. One other question with regard to the athletics expenses, this doesn't involve transportation either, right?
No.
That's separate?
Right, right.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions with regard to the sheets that were just provided? Does anyone have any questions with regard to what, what was discussed on the last, on Tuesday? Oh, yeah, it was Tuesday. Mr. Kosker?
Yeah, maybe not so much a question, but a comment?
Sure.
If that's okay. So I just wanted to kind of talk briefly on special education, because I know we've focused on it a lot, and there's a lot of reasons we focus on it a lot. And just reiterate, not so much for the people in this room, but for people listening as well, and reiterate what Dr. Zito said many times, our efficiency in that area. So, our percentage of students identified is sixteen point five percent, which is right around the state average, very close. So we have a lot of students with special education needs, but similar in numbers and percentage-wise to the state, yet our expenses are lower compared to average in the state. Our, we spend twenty-two, twenty-two point one percent of our funding is for special education students. So, again, good bang for our buck. And we often talk about the money, because that's what we're doing here, we're talking about budgets, and then the legal obligation that we have to serve students with disabilities, you know, under federal law. And then just the right thing to do, which is, I think, what we often do in Rocky Hill, and is important to understand, that there's the money, there's the legal obligation, then there's, what's the right thing to do to keep these students included to the greatest extent possible and, and have them included in, in school here in Rocky Hill. And I can speak from personal experience, because my son is a student with, with special education needs, and, and I'm gonna tell this very brief story of, of him in like second grade or first or second grade, and he was in, at West Hill School, and we were considering outplacement as parents. So we took him to an outplacement school and kind of said, well, we're thinking about this for a summer school program. And this is where we're explaining to our child, who's again, probably six or seven at the time. Now, he didn't say a word till he was four, and he had a lot of communication challenges. So we went and we met the school, and he met the teachers, and we left, and we come home. And on the way home, he says to us, he's in the backseat, and he goes, out of the blue, "I belong at West Hill," he says. And he never even used the word "belong" before, right? So we're like, holy smokes, like blown away. And, and it's just, it's a very brief story, but again, just to the testament of the importance of him. And since then, the district's done a wonderful job keeping him in district. We've never had to ask to take him out, we wouldn't want to, and he's gotten so much benefit from being in district. So, again, I just wanted to tell a brief story and thank you for the, the space to do that, but it's, it's huge, and it's, it's been really beneficial. And his life is so much richer, and other students' lives are so much richer for them being together in district. And, and that's the case with all students. I mean, I'm using my example, because it's my son, and, and I can speak to that, but there's just, there's just a lot of benefits. I mean, we, we have been investing in the programs and the services under Dr. Zito, Amy's direction, the board, and, and those things all help. Whether it's the Dream Cafe and Dream Academy, it's just one thing that we highlight, but the, all these other programs are so critical, too. If we invest that money in these students here and build the programs and provide the services, it's better than it is elsewhere, trust me. It really is. So anyway, thank you, I just wanted to get that out. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kosker. Thank you for sharing that. Anyone else have any comments or proposed revisions or anything to, anything with the, what we went through on Tuesday? All right. Then from there, I'll give it back to Dr. Zito.
So, we're gonna turn it over to Chris, who's gonna go through the technology presentation.
I wouldn't get a word in edgewise. All right. I'm gonna jump right in, because I know the group in the back is anxious. So, I just wanted to go over the initiatives we stated last year when we were here talking about what we're gonna do. Primary one being the middle school transition to docs and iPads. Danielle and my staff have been working on that. We're happy to say that that project will be wrapping up in the delivery phase, at least on February nineteenth, fourteenth. So, all of the middle school at this point has been transitioned to docs, the rest of them, they're gonna get their iPads, and they'll be complete at the middle school as of the fourteenth. If you saw from last year's, in the projections from last year, I had a firewall upgrade in our equipment budget for this upcoming fiscal year. The way the money worked out and the way my, the upgrades were going up, I took advantage of an end of year, they were trying to get their sales in, and managed to get the firewall upgrades built into my maintenance for the year. So that's been removed from this upcoming budget, because I managed to build it into my maintenance. Middle school edge switching went as planned, those were all upgraded, finished up over Christmas break. Middle school and Moser wireless up, access point upgrades, those have all been done, except for a couple of key areas. Basically, we need skylifts and schedule time to get someone into, go to the high areas, like in the gym and that sort of thing. We did, thanks to Mr. Zettergren, and re-engage in cybersecurity insurance. So all of our initiatives from last year, the bullfish training, the, the fishing videos and testing. I have a penetration tester that I run occasionally, that's all part of the things that we had discussed to try and qualify again for cybersecurity insurance. So we, we are back under the cybersecurity insurance, which is, helps me sleep at night, but we did start the high school AV refresh, basically all the, it was twenty-six at the high school this summer, replacing the projectors with like, with new laser, high-powered, high-lumin projectors, they're much better in the classrooms. We built, and with curriculum's guidance, built a PD evaluation software for all of our staff, which honestly, I think has been a great help to mostly administrators, because I know, I know it was a lot, but at least everything's in the same place, and the uptake has been, I think, pretty positive. And we began investigating a new school home engagement software, which we will talk about now. So, after the conversation of Technology Committee, and the conversation we had, I am proposing that we move forward with doc and iPad standard migrations at Moser, Stevens, and West Hill. The primary, primary driver of that is the age of the desktops in those classrooms. So, basically, we're looking at devices that are seven, eight years old. I'm getting complaints about slowness. And as we had discussed, the direction that was given was no desktops being purchased for general use classrooms. So, and I do not have enough in stock and spares, even if I move stuff around to make sure that those classrooms have what they need to have their instruction on a daily basis. So that's why we went forward and said that we're gonna migrate Moser, Stevens, and West Hill all next year. We're going to consolidate and update the Moser core networking switches. Basically, what that means is that's the interface between our buildings. When Moser was built, there was a sizable data center planned in that space, so we have dual redundant system there. I'm proposing basically consolidating all of that data, that data center back to the high school with the existing stuff. The way we're gonna end up doing that, it'll be a considerable cost savings, because we won't have to buy an additional SAN. Thank you to the board for purchasing the SAN for us last year, that's worked out terrifically. So instead of replacing the equipment that's aging out at Moser, I intend to add storage to the SAN that we purchased last year, and add a single server to the cluster that I have in order to, it consolidates cost and manpower. We have one set of systems to manage. With that consolidation, we can consolidate the networking, we don't need the redundancy anymore. So that's significant cost savings as well. We plan to move forward with the AV systems at the high school. I have thirty-six projectors and whiteboards to replace the high schools'. We have some old, old smart panels that are starting to fail in the high school. That was after discussion with curriculum and with Mr. Fodi. We kind of agreed that the, the panels are not really utilized at the high school. There's not a lot of touch going on, especially with the, the iPad rollouts for those spaces. So that, again, about half the price of trying to replace those one for one with smart panels. And lastly, is the Parent Square home engagement transition. So, as you all know, we use School Messenger for most of our communication right now. There's been a lot of requests and needs within district for various reasons, to have a parent, a more robust parent relationship in the classroom. Parent Square is something that's been used, is used throughout Connecticut and throughout the nation, very heavily. My daughter's school district uses it, my wife's school district uses it. I'm sure many of you are at least familiar of it through other means. But that would not only replace School Messenger, but also allow for direct communication between students and parents in a, I'm sorry, between teachers and parents in a protected space. So we will have full data privacy, actually, that was just completed today. So we are planning on piloting Parent Square for the rest of the year. They gave it to, that to us free of charge to get it built, and begin with that July 1st. All right. So nitty-gritty for all of that. So this is my line by line, the only line I omitted is our mileage reimbursement, because it's under two thousand dollars, so I didn't put it on here for space. So professional services, I've pulled back some of the budget there, specifically because we do a lot of the stuff in-house now. There's not a lot of need to hire out. My staff are capable of doing it. A lot of the networking stuff we used to hire out, my guys can trace lines. The only times we do hire out is mass install, so the projectors at the high school, just because of the volume, my staff wouldn't be able to do it. Hanging cameras in those places, similar to the, the access points, that sort of service, that's what I keep in the professional services budget. We kept repairs exactly as they are. And again, that includes the student DPP, the device protection plans, that's been working for the Chromebooks, that's included in the repairs budget. Software budget went up, looks fourteen percent. Mostly, most of that is just annual renewals, they are gouging me. And I do my best, like I did with the firewall, to try and keep that as low as I possibly can, but I'm fully expecting that they're once again gonna beat me up. I'll show, we'll have some drivers in a minute for each of those. Supplies budget, we kept the same. AV budget decreased a little bit, that's generally where I buy is parts and supplies for all the AVs in the rooms. We're moving towards laser projectors, we don't have as many consumables. So most of that budget is going to be supplies to build the rest of the high school and repairs thing, repair specifically AV as we go. And as always, my seven-thirty equipment budget, the increase there is mostly Chromebooks. It is a new Dell model year, and between that and the volatility of where a lot of this equipment is coming from, that's the, the driver for increasing there. But we'll get into more specific in a minute. So, drivers, I, I picked the two big ones, as always, the software budget and the equipment budget. So, software budget, the ads and requests, Parent Square is additional to School Messenger. Air server licensing, that goes directly with the iPad rollout. Basically, we need a one-to-one licensing for air server for each of the stations we replace. Power school registration was a surprise. Apparently, we've been underpaying for that module by a hundred percent for several years. We had an account, a CSM change, and they discovered it and said, hey, you owe us fifteen thousand dollars. That was not in arrears, that's per year. They weren't charging me in arrears, but apparently, our previous rep was giving us a significant discount. We did increase our Adobe licensing, that was to replace a piece of software that curriculum was holding. It is significantly less expensive and has much better utility for all the schools. So, grades six through twelve now have access to the full Adobe suite for, for class and for PDF editing. Again, going with the, the iPads, everyone's using Goodnotes and everything in there, and they're able to use and modify PDFs and turn them in that way. And then just overall standard licensing increases. The only notable cut in that line was, last year, we carried about ten thousand dollars worth of LMS training in our Vector system. Vector is the, the PD software for evaluations that we've been using. Basically, staff and HR and curriculum and special education, we took a look at a lot of those modules, and they just really, they didn't suit our needs. Between the stuff the state provides and in-house trainings that were created, we realized that we really just didn't need it. So we, we managed to cut that out. Major equipment lines, so again, the doc and iPad migration from Moser, Stevens, and West Hill. That was basically a sidestep from what I had presented to the Technology Committee, removed the desktops, added in the two buildings for the iPads and Docs. Moser top or rack switch, compute and storage, that's the consolidation to the high school. Sixth and ninth grade Chromebooks, as always, is expensive, but they, they need the new ones every year. Staff laptop refresh, that's on the five-year schedule. Have about sixty-five thousand dollars in for that refresh. All those machines are at least five years old. Student iPad refresh, again, based on the iOS refreshes, when they depreciate models, we have to replace them in order to keep them up to date and protect security-wise. And then the AV replacements. Again, quickly cuts and changes, reduced the Moser core switching, reduced the move for compute and storage to, from Moser to the high school. One notable thing is I did shift in the original projection for this year, I shifted the edge switching for all the elementary schools out one extra year. The main reason for that is we are out of E-rate money for this year. Because we're out of E-rate money, generally in my budget, I only show you fifty percent of what that material costs, because we get reimbursed for the other fifty percent. So, basically, it would have completely obliterated our budget. My only concern is that budget is supposed to reset next year, it's a federally-funded budget through E-rate, through the FCC. Everyone's hopeful that it's gonna be renewed for the same amount. If it's not, then we could have increases in my projections just to maintain our, our infrastructure. And I also pushed out the third grade Chromebooks, because they're good for another year or two, just cost savings wise. And that's all I have specifically for you. Is there anything that stands out?
Mr. Gavin?
The software stuff, as far as the expense, is that based on like a, per, like a number of users, as far as the contract's concerned?
Which one?
The software. I don't know, you said that you were having trouble and things were going up.
It's just annual software increases. It's not necessarily licensing, they renew every year, and there's no specific model. Some, some of our software is per site, some of our software is per user, so it really depends on which package. But generally, they, they basically gouge us every year for four or five percent, every year for our software. year for our software.
Yep.
Four or five percent. I was thinking it was, when you say gouging, four or five percent, it's not gouging.
It feels like it's...
I'm thinking, you know, maybe we should, you know, co-mingle with multiple towns to try to get a better rate.
The state is actually doing that. The state, some of the, specifically CEN through the state, is working with CSDE to try and consolidate specifically some of our, some of the high flyers. Parent Square, JAMF, which is our device management for iPads. And there's several others that they're trying to group together for group pricing specifically for that reason.
That's what I was hoping you were gonna say.
Mm-hmm. They're trying.
Majority of the schools in the state are using the same stuff that someone should be negotiating.
Yeah, absolutely, they are.
It's a much larger unit than Rocky Hill Public Schools.
They've succeeded with CrowdStrike so far. That's the only one. So they're working towards additional.
That was all I had to ask.
Next one. Ms. Manoa?
Hi. I have a quick question regarding, I know this has been brought up in the, in the subcommittee meetings regarding the laptops, but aren't, especially in the elementary school level, aren't desktops cheaper to use rather than the laptops? Because laptops run around $1,200 versus $800 desktop.
So I do get some education pricing. And generally, the way I build our desktops versus our laptops is the internals are nearly identical. So it is a little bit more expensive, mostly just for the screen. Excuse me. Otherwise, it's really not that big of a, of an increase. They all have laptops anyway, so it's kind of offsetting the cost of the desktops for the docks.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manoa. Ms. LaFredo?
Can I just piggyback off that question? So can you explain for the initiatives for next year, when you had written about the docks and the iPads at Moser-Stevens and West Hill? So the dock is for the laptop, and that's how they're gonna connect to their smartboards?
Yes.
So there are going to be no desktops whatsoever that connect hardwired to the smartboard?
Correct. The dock will replace the desktop box and the iPad, or the laptop will directly connect through that way to the smartboard. So they won't lose any functionality at all.
The iPad connects too, or no?
The iPad connects directly using the Air Server license to the laptop, and then you can display your iPad in that room from anywhere in the room.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaFredo. Mr. Cosker?
Yeah, just following up on that same thing, because I'm just trying to get that straight in my head. So we remove a desktop.
Yep.
We put in a docking station. They use the laptop that they already have, that they have had, continue to have. What's the cost? Is the cost is comparable from the desktop to the docking? Are those like similarly priced? I have no idea what the...
If you add the docking station, the iPad, and the Apple Pencil stylus, they're basically identical.
So that, that little package of a docking, pen, and iPad, same as a desktop?
As a desktop.
Okay. So cost-wise, there's no real savings. It's about a wash.
Yep.
Because there's been conversation, and this is more for the entire board, about some teachers not wanting to go that route, but it doesn't appear there's a cost savings for that. It's just odd that we're, like, it would seem to me that there would be an option of giving a choice. If someone wanted to stick with a desktop, there's no cost difference there. Is the replacement time different? I mean, I assume iPad, I mean, I have iPads. The replacement time is similar to a desktop-ish. I don't know about the docking part. I have no idea what that even...
They're about the same.
So everything gets replaced roughly in the same time and the same cost?
I think, I think the issue was that a lot of teachers had both.
The desktop and the laptop.
Can I chime in? Yeah. So we had, staff had both. And over the last, last year and this year, we have had teachers at all three of the schools piloting this transition. And some of the schools are almost already fully transitioned to this model. So we've tested out our curriculum on it. It's pretty much been seamless for the people who have made that transition. The nice thing is that you have a laptop that you can now bring back and forth from home to school. If we were to do what you're proposing, teachers would lose that.
Yeah, I wasn't proposing anything.
You know, I'm just explaining that is limiting.
But they already have a laptop now.
They do.
I mean, the way I understand it is now there's a desktop and a laptop, and we're taking the desktop and replacing it with a docking station and an iPad and a pen.
I'll let Chris explain. There is a cost difference to what we had before and what we're doing now. Do you want to explain that?
The replacement is different. The driver was originally, when we started this in the technology plan about three years ago, is the board had said that they did not want, or they did not see value in two devices in a classroom doing the exact same thing on the exact same platform.
Right. A laptop and a desktop.
But, but the desktop was hardwired, though, whereas a laptop is coming and going. So if that teacher is out, how are they connecting to the smartboard?
We have a set of, obviously, this came up, Hen has come up. We have a set of laptops for subs and for the building subs all have their own laptops. The boards and everything do work with Chromebooks as well, so all of our pairs have Chromebooks. You just lose some of the touch functionality. But we do have a set of, basically, I use some older laptops that are being retired and leave them in the office for subs that come in to go to that classroom if the teacher has taken their, their devices home. There's something in that room that they can use to project and interact.
All right. That's helpful. I appreciate it, Steve, because I'm just trying to understand it, right? We're voting on the budget, and I want to understand the budget. And the cost, there's no cost change, really, from replacing a desktop to a docking iPad and stuff. They have two devices. They're just different devices. One's a desktop, one's a docking station instead. So as far as whether we replace desktops this year, two or twenty or a hundred, or put docking stations in place, that cost wouldn't change. It's more of a, we want to go this direction because we like docking stations better, I guess. Like, I, you know, I'm not sure exactly why that's the case. But we also have to deal, actually, with the issue of people being out and subs and... Whereas if you have a desktop, you just walk up to the desktop and do your thing as a sub. So, all right. I'm just trying to get that all in my head.
I appreciate the conversation. And I think, though, part of the issue was continuing to replace the desktops and because they both have to be...
Understood.
They're gonna have both, so we're gonna replace their laptops and replace their desktops.
Correct. Which, and that's what I just asked. You also have to replace the docking station and iPad in about the same timeframe as the desktop. That's what I just asked. And I wanted to just get confirmation on that. So you still have to replace the docking station and the iPad every X number of years and the iPad. So that replacement part doesn't change from what you're saying very much. You know what I mean? So there's no, there's no cost benefit that I've been told from moving in this direction, which is fine.
Doesn't seem right.
I, I'm just trying to get it straight in my head. That's why the confusion, again, I wasn't part of all the conversations at the Technology Committee meetings, but I'm just trying to... Originally, that was my mind. Like, there's some, you know, cost savings to go this direction with dockings, but it doesn't appear that's the case, generally.
Again, my understanding was when we had the discussions, when we wrote the technology plan, it was having two of the, paying for two of the exact same device, doing the exact same, the compromise.
Paying, but just different types of devices. Okay. Just because I know there's conversation and some teachers have been piloting, and I understand you guys have explained that, and some teachers have been not so happy with that move because of whatever instruction. And again, I come from, I taught in the past, and I had a laptop, no desktop. So I, I get it can work. I understand how it can work. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Can I just, I know you already said it, but I just, so a docking station that connects to a laptop is the same exact cost as a...
Not just a docking station.
No. So we're throwing in an iPad.
That, the iPad, and the pen.
Oh, okay.
Docking station's about $200.
Well, so, so that makes a big difference, though, because part of what the board was considering was the fact that, and I think everybody was on the same page as it, is that a teacher can't walk around the classroom with a desktop and help students or teach from the back of the room. And with the iPad and the docking station and the licenses that we're getting, they are able to do that.
But elementary is a little bit different than high school. So what we saw was a high school demonstration, and that's not what you're doing in an elementary classroom.
Right. So we're moving along through the, through the process at this point.
But could they improve their teaching style?
Yeah. Again, I'm not, I'm not questioning, again, the teachers want to teach how they want to teach. I'm not gonna question what they do in the classroom. Like, I'm just saying, we're talking about giving them the tools, right? The technology, the tools to do their job. And if they thought this tool was better, whatever that might be, a desktop, and there's no cost difference to us, then it seems weird that we wouldn't say, "Cool. We'll replace your desktop," instead of giving you a docking and an iPad and a pen. You know, because they might be like, "I don't want the iPad." I've talked to teachers who said, "My iPad sits in the drawer. I never use it." That's that teacher. Cool. Like, they don't need it. I don't know if they get turned back in or not used. I don't know how that works, but it just seems odd. That's all. That's why I wanted to have the conversation. Didn't have the opportunity to have the conversation in the technology meetings as, as much as others. So I thought it's important to talk about because this is, again, we're making these budget decisions based on this, so... And again, we're approving dollars for this stuff, not deciding, it's not our decision to decide, I guess, what you spend the dollars on, I guess, but whether it's a docking or a...
Can I also, I would just like to share that there are teachers who have made the transition, who are moving around the classroom at the very low levels. So prior to that, they would be at the front of the room at their desktop to, in order to be able to utilize the smartboard. Now, with the iPads, they're able to move all over the room. And there are teachers who have had it long enough and are, have reached that comfort level where they are utilizing it that way. So there's a little more flexibility in the ways in which you can utilize the technology. The traditional way of being at the computer, you can stand at the smartboard, you can move around with the iPad. There's several additional ways in which you can instruct with the combination that we've given them versus what we had before, which was the desktop and the smartboard. And it really is gonna be very dependent upon individuals' comfort levels, the training that we are giving them. We have been very specifically focusing the training in small groups. And then Danielle has, Galigan has been excellent about doing follow-up sessions with teachers that need it. And a teacher can go as far as they want with it. Some people really are not wanting to utilize the iPad, and they're sticking to the way in which that they, they used to use the desktop. And that's personal preference. But this does provide an additional way in which they can use the technology. So, you know, we're gonna continue to train and support the staff on all of the different ways in which the technology can be used. So I don't know if that helps you to picture a little bit more of how it can be used and how it is being used in some cases. Thank you.
So they can still do things the old way. They just do it with a laptop.
Yeah, correct.
And there's an inherent benefit that's brought by them having the ability to move about the room, whether or not they do it, whether they, whether a particular teacher chooses to do it or not.
Correct.
And so now, what we're pushing towards is a uniform kind of system where every teacher would have that ability, and they could use it as they, as they see fit.
Yes.
And remember, that is how I put it in the technology plan. It was classroom standardization because it, from a workflow standpoint, it's a lot easier for us.
I would think from a maintenance standpoint for your staff as well.
One set of materials, one set of spares, one set of, yeah, absolutely. My guys know what they need to bring to a classroom for a specific issue.
And still access the board.
With a, with a laptop. It's a, it's a...
Chris, just to prove, though, a laptop in a dock can function exactly like a desktop, correct?
Hundred percent.
Okay. You don't need both.
But laptops cost more than desktops.
Not last time we looked at it, it didn't.
Not generally.
I think, in general, the switch was fairly similar, and the added benefit was the ability of the teacher to walk around.
So it's cost, it's cost neutral, but they have more tools at their fingertips, whether they choose to use them or not.
And this is the world that our kids are growing up in, so I think that we need to...
Embrace it.
Embrace it and make it a part of their learning experience just as much as it is a part of the world that they're living in.
Ms. Morpheo?
Just a quick question. So if there are some teachers that are adamant about not using the iPad, which is fine if they're not comfortable with it, is there a way to, like I said, if they're adamant, use those for other, so we don't have to keep buying them and they're just sitting in drawers? Or is there a big group of those teachers, or...
Honestly, I don't think there is a big group. There's, there's a few stubborn ones. A lot of the stubborn ones, I think, have actually begun to adopt it, using it more as they see their peers using it, as they see how everyone else is able to enhance their classroom. There's some of them that I wouldn't be able to pry it from their hands.
Okay. I just would hate to spend that money and it just sits in drawers if there's a bunch of them, you know what I mean?
And we have the ability to see if they've been used, and we have looked to monitor that, and it's not widespread.
Okay.
And we have. And those, those that have not, basically, I look to see how often they've checked into my management system. There have been a few that they were in a drawer for two or three months, and at that point, Danielle reached out, "Well, do you need more training? How can we help you get?"
Okay. All right. That makes me feel better about it.
Yeah, we are, we're not just letting them exist.
Okay. That was my concern. Thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Comments? Input?
Thank you for the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. And actually, Chris, I did want to say one other thing that we got, we got a little sidetracked there, but I did want to thank you for kind of being on point and working in the firewall upgrade to your, I mean, I think that that's, you know, I want to make sure that you understand that we appreciate that and see the fact that, you know, it takes a certain level of kind of care and attention to detail to make that happen. So we appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I think we'll move along to CIP.
So Ron, you want to come on up here in case you have questions? So we had a facilities meeting a couple of months ago, Mr. Gavin, when we reviewed the CIP with your committee. And did that work prior to the budget? So this is the last time it was touched with the Facilities Committee. So you have it laid out in front of you, the major proposed projects. Just make a couple of comments, and then we can open it up for questions. And Ron and Chuck are here. But Stevens HVAC, we're looking at trying to, you know, get through some more work there. That's been a multi-year project. The bleachers are also scheduled for next year. That would be the visitor's side. The home side, obviously, is fine. We are starting to see the need for furniture, particularly at Stevens and West Hill, but also, I think, GMS over time. Look at furniture there as well. So, you know, 1.75, 1.725 million overall. It's pretty jumped into the West, the Stevens project, rather. This year as well, Ron, you can correct me, but I think we started design work on the West Hill roof.
Correct.
We started design work this current year on the GMS Tech Labs and Media Center.
Yep.
And we're doing some HVAC work this year. So pretty straightforward, coming down the pike. We know there's an issue with the tennis courts as well. It's pretty significant, we discussed. Pretty, pretty direct. Historically, the town has, last few years anyways, cut pretty deeply into the CIP. We'll see what they do this year. I referenced earlier that you had a handout we gave you. If you could take just a quick look at that, you could see what Ron did is they worked together off the CIP to kind of rank the importance of the projects. And they are, they are ranked, Warner, based on a score. So if you look at the top, you'll see that the most pressing need is the HVAC system Stevens, followed by, you know, the bouncer on West Hill roof is right up there with is the HVAC system at Stevens, followed by, you know, the bouncer on West Hill roof is right up there with a 65 score as well. So obviously, those are both very important projects. The Stevens windows and doors really do need a facelift, that's old, old hardware there, in the most, in most cases. Media center for GMS has been on the discussion board for quite a while. You can see, see the other things laid out, but we feel like, you know, these are all important, in our view, the McVicker bleachers were, you know, would be nice to have the visitors' bleachers, not, not necessarily, certainly not more important to us than the HVAC system at Stevens or the roof of West Hill, but pretty straightforward, again, to reiterate, we did not take a position on the town projects, whether or not, you know, France Street is more important than Beach Road, it depends, like, because it depends where you live, but we didn't take a position on it, so happy to, you know, deal with any questions you might have on the CIP.
I was just looking through the CIP and comparing it to the thing you were filling out for the town. So we do have a couple of that flip-flop in there, so I don't know if it would behoove us to move McVicker Field out and the enclosure of the library in, because when you look at the point totals.
Yeah, the other thing that we took into consideration when we got together to look at that is, you know, try to spread out the costs so that, from a cost standpoint, try to smooth out the CIP, so, like you said, the McVicker bleachers probably aren't a priority, but they fit from a cost standpoint to kind of smooth it out.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, that one, the, the reason I brought that one up specifically is there's only a $45,000 difference, so if we wanna pop McVicker out and pull the enclosure in, just based on the numbers. You know, bleachers. So, I, I know that when the town looks at this, because I've seen on their CIP, the way they rank things versus the way we have ours, so if you go back and look at last year's town CIP for Board of Ed, it's more in alignment with the numbers than it is with what ours even said on the website. So, I think we should just try to get it a little bit more in order, to match whatever we're submitting numbers-wise.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the...
I mean, I know that the, the HVAC and the roof are the two, one and one A, so and everything else kinda comes afterwards, but you know, I don't know that the tennis court upgrade should be in front of, say, you know, the education rooms or, you know, the tech center.
Well, there might be an immediate impact on the students that play tennis versus we have rooms that take care of tech right now, so you know, Chuck and I did really look at it hard and see how we can, you know, smooth it down, we're not gonna get, you know, $5 million, so to move things up that fast.
Yeah, 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 no, I was just comparing it to the layout of the numbers.
This is the first time we received a checklist request like this, I just wanted you guys to see it.
Yeah. And to that point, you know, we wanna make sure the whole board saw it, and this kinda was dropped on us, and also, we can have a facilities committee meeting where we can even kind of more weigh in on these particular rankings. Chuck and, and Ron, I think, did a really good job of, based on our discussions at the facilities meetings, and then based on the CIP, because really, if, if you think about it, what we do with the CIP by moving the things around is kind of, is basically prioritize the things that are, are important. So, but I, I would anticipate we'll make, obviously, the ranking part of our facilities process now, so that it's a little clearer, and so that the board can have some input on it.
The only other comment I would make is that it's important for everybody to understand, I think everybody on the board understands this, but the public at large too, that the the CIP is a separate appropriation, separate and independent from the operating budget, so it's really a town appropriation. At the end of the day, from a, from a legal standpoint, the board has control over its facilities, but they're all owned by the taxpayers, they're all town properties. So, it's important, in my opinion, for the town to fund all their projects. Certainly, their roads need to be operating properly, I like the nice roads we have here, because we don't have to have too many school delays, because allow us to go over the roads nicely, so, that's important to me. Obviously, the fuel tank, all right, these are all important projects, we didn't take an opinion on them, because I'm not privy to the, to the urgency of one repair over the other, however, even like, for example, with the tennis courts, that's a town asset, it's used by residents. There's gonna be a point soon where the CIAC says to us, you're no longer allowed to hold matches on those courts. And we'll probably, you know, give the Rocky Hill Tennis Center a phone call at that point, just like we do with, with ice hockey, we don't have a Rocky Hill rink, we take the kids to Newington or Cromwell to the rink. It'll be the same thing with the tennis program unless the board cuts tennis, and I recommend cutting sports, but it'll be the same type of thing, so at a certain point, the town is gonna have to cough up the money to deal with the tennis courts, they, they're, they're not at a point where they can be rehabilitated again, they've done kind of a patch over once that lasted about seven years. We need new courts, it's gonna be about a million dollars, more or less, so again, these are all important things, I think it's important to space them out and prioritize them, obviously, from an educational standpoint, the roof and the the heat, the HVAC system at Stevens are the most critical things, but all this stuff's gonna have to be dealt with in due time, or other things happen, I mean, several years ago, many of you weren't on the board, we were told the McVicker track was at a point where we weren't gonna be able to run track meets anymore. In fact, several lanes had been closed by the officials. Eventually, the town resurfaced McVicker, and now we have, you know, our track team is competing on all the lanes, we don't have the ref out there closing a couple lanes down before a race. So, these are just things like, you have to maintain this stuff, just like you try to maintain things in your home, it's important.
Thank you, Dr. Zito. I think it's important to note, too, there's tremendous overlap, I mean, these are school, I mean, they're town assets, they're used primarily for school purposes, but there really is a tremendous amount of, of overlap with overall, or, or general town use, whether it be the pool, whether it be the fields, whether it be the track, the, just, I mean, so
School gyms.
The school gyms, you know, with Little League, with travel basketball, with Porch-Mrak basketball. Mr. Kosker?
Yeah, just building on that, because I know the pool, boiler and pumps the town is putting on their CIP, and we had the conversation about this tennis court thing, from my recollection, and how that would be balanced, I noticed there's no notes in here yet. Is that gonna be a shit, like, we haven't had that conversation with the town?
We talked about putting it on the CIP, I mean, at the end of the day, again, why I talk about a separate appropriation, there's no impact on taxpayers, whatever side of the ledger.
Doesn't matter, right.
It does not matter, if you're a Rocky Hill taxpayer, and the courts are being paid for at $900,000,
Taxpayer market.
Your mill rate's impacted whether we put it on the CIP or whether the town puts it on their capital plan, there's no difference. It's just a matter of, of record keeping.
All of the CIPs are town managed.
Right, it's just, it's our...
We're just trying to prioritize, prioritize.
To your point, Sean, too, I think, you know, that, the fact that, whatever it was, came up higher, the one that you said was 80 grand.
The library.
The library, right, you know, if that's a higher priority, could that be, so it's a conversation, I guess, a facilities committee could have, is that, can that be moved over instead of bleachers, and again, the prioritization is super helpful, that's, I think that's nice to see that, that's helpful to understand.
Alright. Anyone have any, any further questions for Ron regarding the CIP?
Yeah, just one, the, the HVAC at Stevens is 1.5 million, is there any grants or there, or programs you can apply for to coop some of that money, or is that already been done?
So, there, there was a round of HVAC money, and we did apply and receive some money for this coming summer, and for the Phase 1 projects, and reimbursement in that. They haven't told anybody if there's gonna be additional funds at this point, and obviously, if there is, we will follow the process and make sure we apply for it.
Yeah, and previously, the HVAC product, projects were never, had great grant funds available, but going back probably, what, three or four years now? They started a program and started to put some grant money towards HVAC projects, but it was kinda like pilot program, I guess you could say, so we didn't know, we don't know when those funds may or may not be available. They, they do let us know when they are, we just don't know how long they're gonna be there.
And then the, you've mentioned before, I know the roof is scheduled, the West Hill roof is slated, not for this budget, for afterwards, 800,000 each, for $800,000 a year, for two years, and, but we just, you've already started the design project, right, design portion of that? Can it be done over, you know, two-year period, or?
It, it can, it might not be two, I mean, it's sectioned off in a way where you can actually, like, do the gym cafeteria as one phase, maybe the main classroom, so there are, there are natural dividing lines where we can actually do that. Reapplying for a grant multiple times, there's a lot more work involved in that. The, we broke out the 800 and 800, I think it was based on the town, during our last meeting, so that they would actually establish a fund, so that we do, we get 800,000 one year, 800,000 the next year, and actually do the entire job at once.
And obviously, that's a projection, because, you know, it hasn't gone the bid yet, so it could be
Right, so we'll, we'll have a full estimate at the end of the design. So, you know, that number has been floating around for a few years, the 1.6. There's a good chance it's probably gonna go up a little bit.
Is your one side of the building that has been identified as being worse than the other, or just pretty much the whole thing, it's, it's?
It, we have leaks popping up almost every rainstorm at this point in time, and we have repaired immediately. It's, there's been a couple of larger ones in the cafeteria, so it's not really, you can't identify, you know, one roof that needs it more, but...
If I recall correctly, that's one of those ones where there is automatically a grant associated with it, but you have to be able to fund the full project at the same time.
Right, and we can, we can, we could fund smaller pieces of that and still get reimbursement, it's just you have to apply every time.
As a piece, as a piece.
Thank you.
Doing it in sections, does that raise the cost significantly or of, of consequence?
It will, because there's more, you know, there's more setup time, you know, you could get a different contractor the next bid.
Gotta bring the dumpsters back.
Yeah, so, it is, it is a complete new project every time you do it, so it will add costs, and the longer you put it out, obviously, costs continue to go up.
One question about the roof, just a question on the design part, what type of roof is gonna be put on, is it like a?
It'll, it'll be, it's called EPDM, it's a, it's a rubberized roof. Right now, we have a, an asphalt buildup roof with, but that's the typical, it'll be the same product that we just put on the middle school.
Okay. Is that the same one you put on Stevens also?
It's similar, Stevens has a PVC membrane, it was slightly different, it was a better, because it's mostly pitched over there, so that was a better product at the time for that roof. Flat roofs do better with the EPDM, so.
And that could be put on during the school year, or does that have to be done?
That would be during, during the summer.
During the summer only, okay.
Ms. Manillo?
So, Ron, how, how old is this roof right now at West Hill?
1994, so
Wow.
Yeah, it's, it's outlived its life expectancy, you put on a, you, you know, we get 20-year warranties on roofs.
So, so my boys all went to West Hill, and I, and I remember it used to leak in the, and it's still leaking, apparently, so
That's beyond, beyond end of useful life.
Definitely a priority, I'm sorry.
It is definitely right up there with, with, with the Stevens project, I mean, they're, they're hand in hand, I mean, for different reasons, but you know, thankfully, I have a good crew, and we have a good contractor that comes out and does quarterly PMs to look for areas that are problematic, and then they make the repairs as needed if they come in. But, but we do, every rainstorm, there's something leaking, for sure.
Is there, is there, is it more so in the, on the cafeteria side rather than on the other side with the classrooms?
Not so much in the classrooms, more so in the corridors.
Yeah, I remember that too.
Once in a while, you'll get a classroom, one cafeteria had one that they were chasing for a little while, but I think we seem to find that. Yeah, it's hard, it's actually hard to find these leaks sometimes, so.
Yeah, okay.
Well, thank you for playing whack-a-mole, I guess, that's what we'll say.
A lot of my job is whack-a-mole.
Let's get it fixed.
Anyone else have any questions for Ron, comments, Mr. Kosker?
Yeah, so, this is a fairly simple question, the, the doors and windows at Stevens, I know it's pushed out because it's after the other two large top or higher priority projects, is that a fazeable project too, I mean, it
It, it could be.
It seems like the one that could be, it's just, I know it's planned this way now, but as time went down the road, as things adjusted.
We could do it by wing, we could do it by corridor.
And we don't have the money, it looks like, available before then, trying to keep things smooth, as you guys talk about, to really put anything in there.
But that would also, if you do it in multiple, you know, it's gonna be one
Increase the total cost.
One architect design. It could be multiple contractors and that sort of thing, if you do it over time.
It does increase the total cost.
Anything you do in phases increases costs.
Cool, thank you.
Follow up on that, Steve.
Yeah, absolutely.
The follow-up on Mr. Kosker's question about the doors and windows, it's not currently a safety or security issue, correct?
No, the, the classroom doors are no longer needed as a means of egress for fire, because the building's sprinkled now, so we, the fire marshal had us eliminate those. The doors open, they close, sometimes you gotta put a shoulder into them. It's, it'll be an energy savings, you know, because they're single-pane glass, some, you know, we would get rid of operable windows. We would look at possibly putting in egress windows, you know, in, in place of, of the doors, because we would just eliminate the doors at that point in time. It's really just, it's really an upgrade, we're, we're, we're making repairs to some frames and that sort of thing as, as we need to. It's just long, it's long overdue, I mean, we, they're from 1957.
Thank you. Ms. Manillo?
How are the trailers doing, holding up at Stevens with the skunks and everything else?
Unless you just jinxed me, you'd be great on skunks.
But everything else, how are they holding up, I know they were...
They're, they're good, I mean, the roof was done with part, as part of Stevens roof. We, we've had a couple of cold mornings with some of the, the HVAC, but we got, we took care of those fairly quickly. They're, they're aged, but the guys do maintain, I'm actually looking at painting them in, in, in next summer, doing a full caulking and that sort of thing, but they're, they're holding up. For portable classrooms, they're doing it, you know, they're exceeding what a portable classroom is expected to do, but we're okay.
Ms. Manillo?
I'm sorry, I, I'm following back up with West Hill, and I'm just thinking about the, the leaks. What about the carpeting in the, in the hallway because of the leaks, how is that?
So, the, the, the floor covering that I started using when we got here, when I got here, it's, it's really not carpet, it's a tufted vinyl, so there's a quarter inch of vinyl underneath what you see here. So it doesn't, it, you know, we, we clean up, we put fans on it right away, it dries, we don't have a problem with, with, with any type of
Okay, perfect.
Or dishes like that.
No molder.
Nope.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Ms. Manillo, Ms. Tugger?
Are you able to quantify, and maybe this is a discussion for the town, are you able to quantify what our budget is covering in costs for the repairs and cost for the efficiency we're losing in Stevens School that would save on our budget in the future? Or is it, or would it just be replaced with something else?
I mean, we, we can, I mean, obviously, if you don't have air blowing through a cold window, you're gonna, and Ms. Calado has multiple sweaters in her, in her office. But, you know, we, we actually, we, we can, I don't, I don't think it's gonna offset anything, no. I mean, the roof alone and the upgrades in the HVAC are going to show more savings than an actual window replacement.
Thank you.
So, Ron, we, obviously, in the discussion, we've talked about doing things in phases, and, and that it's more expensive to do it that way, right, so I think it's important to understand why that's something that we consider. If we start to add up these projects, just looking at this, again, we go back and it's one pot of money for the town, right, so as we see on the, on the priority list that was given from the town, they're also juggling those projects as well. If you start adding up all these projects, and just on our CIP, with those two main projects, looking at getting into the two, three million dollar range, by splitting it up, it avoids us potentially having to do a referendum as a town or do something, so try to get it done, although it may cost more in the long run, it's, you know, it's done within the means of, of the budget rather than having to do a referendum. So I think it's important to note, like, well, why even consider, just do it, well, if we had, I think if we had unlimited funds, that would be the optimal way to do it, but it's a balancing act to try and get the thing, get, get things what, what need to be done and, and still be responsible to the taxpayers of the community, so and provide an, an excellent education experience for our kids, which is our primary, primary goal here. So I just thought it was important to note that. And thank you for working with us and trying to make that all work, because I know it's, it's a lot more work on your part.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any other questions for Ron with regard to CIP, or Chuck? Alright. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Do we wanna take a recess, I don't know if we have anything else to?
We've covered everything we planned on covering this evening. You know, just, it's kind of a recap, we're at a 4.87% budget, it's in my estimation, very lean. Contains the essentials around the district, there's no fluff in that budget. You have, as a board, until mid-March to adopt your budget. As we've stated for the last several years, we're happy to continue to take questions, you have a third session scheduled for next Thursday, if you wish to use that evening. That's really your decision as a board, I'm not sure it's necessary, we mean, it's still pretty early tonight, if you have additional questions. I'm not sure it's necessary. We mean, it's still pretty early tonight if you have additional questions. I don't think anybody's, you know, racing to get out of here. We're certainly happy to answer additional questions you may have. But you've been thorough. You've asked a lot of great questions already as a board and you've answered everything you've asked. I see a hand here.
Ms. Morpheus?
So I just, I keep going back to these Spanish books because it's only, to me, can we just add that thirty thousand? Because we have so much coming up. I just hate putting things off and then just piling it on and next year we're going to have more things and more things. And would it really add that much difference to the budget and will it really? It's so lean already. I just think every year we always have more and more and more and more added on. Why keep pushing it? You know what I mean? It just, it just seems like such a small amount in comparison.
Yeah, and you're talking about the fact that it was, what, I think eighty, it was.
It was like thirty thousand, I think.
Forty thousand was in the budget and the, the expected full cost was seventy-five.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems so minimal compared to everything. Like, why push it off to another year? And then we're going to have more things and it's going to get pushed off to another year and pushed off to another year and. Or can we see what a difference that would be? I mean.
Thirty-five grand.
Why don't we do this? Because.
It's just so minimal to me. I don't know, compared to everything.
I want to use the, I want to use the restroom, to be quite honest. Why don't we take a five-minute recess? So we don't, I don't want, I don't want to cut your, I don't want to cut your discussion short. But I also don't want to.
Motion for a five-minute recess.
But I also don't want to rush through it.
Motion for a five-minute recess.
So with that, I want to entertain, if everyone's okay with it, we'll have a.
Do what you gotta do. Do what you gotta do, Steve.
Someone's got a second.
Do what you gotta do.
I made a motion, motion.
A quick recess, um, and then we can come back. With that.
Somebody second my motion.
I got seconded, I got to call it, so.
Quick recess.
We have a motion.
Somebody second it.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Okay.
What's that for, recess?
Yeah.
A five-minute recess, we will reconvene in five minutes.
A true five. A real five minutes.
A real five minutes.
A normal Steve five minutes, which is fifteen. Steve, go. You've got five minutes. You've got a real five. You got a real five.